The Rondome Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled the Open Public Meetings Act. The time, date, and location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in the Borough Hall, Rondome Post Office, Mary Bold School, Align Bank of School, Gray Sailing School, and the Rondome Public School District websites. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, board members.
Ms. Derrick.
Here.
Ms. Beebe.
Ms. Beebe's stuck at work.
Mr. Buckhine.
Is in Trenton representing us.
Ms. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Lego.
Here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Benzarella.
Here.
Ms. Samz.
Here.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
Bill Corr.
Alton Press and Mark Ayenucci, Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Sean McCarron, Business Administrator, Director of Curriculum Instruction, Ms. Shad Yezzi, Principal Bingham and Downing School, Mr. Steve Peely, Principal Volt School, Mr. Steve Maloney, Vice Principal Volt School, Gladys Hubbard, Director of Special Education, and Mr. Frank Kein, Supervisor of Building and Grounds. At this time, I need a motion to approve minutes from our regular meeting on January 7th.
I'll make a motion for a meeting on January 7th.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Patty. Any questions on the minutes? Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Samz.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We do have a presentation this evening. Ms. Yezzi?
Yeah, Ms. Traer is going too.
Okay. So we have the Bingham and Downing Green Team here.
Woo! I think I'm more nervous than that, so it's gonna be great, guys. Come on up. This is Olivia. This is Zanin. These are both very great friends.
Hi, Olivia.
So this is one of Bingham's newer clubs, so it's kind of just coming up. So what we've been doing, students in the program not only learn the value of caring for the environment, but we also have fun along the way. So some of the things that we've done, we actually have pictures of. We engage... We're engaging students in activities that promote the three Rs: reduce, reuse, recycle. And we are enhancing our school eco-friendly initiatives led by the students. So I'm gonna have my two friends share with you some of the activities that we've done. So Zanin, you want to start?
Reduce, reuse, recycle. We collect used markers and they recycle five pounds of markers.
So we together collected five pounds of used markers from the building and we actually sent them to Crayola. Crayola runs a program called the Crayola Color Cycle. So we actually just sent them out like two weeks ago. So it was over five pounds of markers. So this was another project that we did. It's the Kindness Rocks Project. I kind of decided to do this because it was right before Kindness Week. So what we talked about was using like our natural resources, the rocks, to promote kindness. So all the kids got the decorated rock. Here's a picture of one of our second graders and one of our third grade friends. And the rocks are outside of Bingham School and the kids can go up, take one if they're having a rough morning, bring it in with them, and then return it at the end of the day. And then this is another activity.
They made bracelets out of recycled plastic bags.
So we read this story. It's called "One Plastic Bag." And then the students made bracelets out of the plastic bags. In the story, it takes place in Africa and it's about a woman who at first sees the value in plastic bags, but then towards like the end of the story, they start talking about how plastic is detrimental to the environment and we have to make sure we use them in the right way. So she actually reused the plastic bags and made them into pocketbooks. So it was a pretty cool story. So we kind of took a spin on that and made bracelets. So. Thank you.
No photo.
Okay, one more. Okay. It's a former student. Get me back.
Thank you for coming. You guys.
Thank you for having us.
Also, just so I can add, as a district, we have collected over 125 pounds in plastic recycled bags that have been donated and tracked. So that's across all three buildings that we collect those bags and then turn them in.
And Downing is starting their Green Team Clubs in March, so both schools are doing similar activities.
Awesome. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments on agenda items? Does anyone have any questions on agenda items at this time? No? Okay, superintendent's report, please.
Good evening, everyone. District enrollment study date 63. Who knows? Twelve add, district, please.
Comments?
Some upcoming things coming up for the district. Preschool interest forms are found on the website. So if you know anybody involved in possibly being a future preschool student, please point them to the website. May I do on March 3rd? Kindergarten information packets are also posted. That orientation's will be able to... We talked about this a little bit last week, Ms. Yezzi and myself. A little bit different, it's gonna be on September 1st next year for one of our PD days for some staff, but a couple hours involved with the preschool orientation for our families. Ms. Yezzi, if you have any questions, you can help these directors to heart. We just had a finance meeting earlier for budget preparation. The budget presentation, the charter character rates is not there. It's a month ahead. We're still gonna do the general presentation in March and then our public hearing will be in April. And we are gonna talk about that later, moving that date.
Couple of dates are gonna be rearranged.
Sliding those dates in April to comply with the county as well. The big thing for the budget, we talked about this last couple months, is that gym floor. I provided you a timeline on update as far as what that's gonna look like. It's gonna take up a good chunk of the summer. It's gonna be a lot of work, we got in there, but we're confident that it will be done. So when students leave here at the third week in June, the contractors who install our bleachers probably will remove those bleachers. Obviously, because they don't want to put them in, they'd have to take them out and put it back in when the project is done. And then Plymouth Environmental, it'll take about five weeks for them to abate the gym floor. Northeast, we're putting down the liquid barrier as well. All this is supervised by African Environmental as part of the requirements. And in northeast, we put four down, correct Frank?
Yep.
I think that takes about two or three weeks, roughly?
Yeah, somewhere in there.
Are we putting your picture in the middle of the floor, Frank?
Whatever you like.
And then Nickerson will be back to put the bleachers in towards the middle of the hall. That's what that timeline is gonna look like. As we talked about in our finance meeting earlier, we're still gonna operate some of our programs here. All that area will be sealed off and we'll just use different parts of the building to get that done. So, any questions on that? Good. Mr. Buckhine tonight is in an ad hoc meeting for mental health and awareness. He's very adamant about that and working with youth mental health. If you read in your notes, I think last year from school boards, Governor Murphy did allocate a lot of funding for that, so we're excited. On the 28th of the month, Mr. Peely, Ms. Hubbard, I think it's Sam Rosi, myself are attending the Camden County Ed Services Youth Mental Health Summit at Swalkin. That's putting people in schools, students with mental health issues and their families. Not only does it work during school day, provide programs for parents as well. At the state is funding that, that's even better news for us as well. Comprehensive equity plan was submitted, the county approved. We also had QSET interim review, which was done by desk audit, which I think that's the first time it's ever done by desk audit. So we just submitted, I thought it was all in forums. Had not heard back yet from that desk audit, correct Frank?
That's, excuse me, desk audit just means that they, you just did it like via email?
So they choose sometimes to come to... So many districts still haven't come to the district.
Okay.
A few select districts this year, they have chosen to not come to the district and to just request certain documents and everything. So it's a... We're looking at that as positive.
Absolutely.
Coming up, boys' basketball team playoffs are underway for the Camden County Elementary League. The boys play Thursday, Mr. Maloney.
Yes, Thursday.
6:30 or 7:45?
7:45.
7:45, so wish them luck. You should have received a PTA Founder's Day dinner invitation, which is next Tuesday evening, February 25th, I believe. It gives at 6 o'clock, am I correct on that one? Right? Your cocktail hour, I believe. And then also, you should have received information on the eighth grade dialogue, which will be held from March 19th at Littlewood High School. If you'd like to attend, you can send an email to Dr. McCarron.
People already have signed up.
I'll just do whatever.
Can I ask you that, please?
Is the basketball game here, is it home?
That basketball game is at Stratford, Stratford School, Yelling.
Yeah.
Correct? Yeah. I believe, I don't... I think they're playing Burling, I believe. We wish them luck. And that's all I have for you.
Any questions for Mr. Ayenucci? Next up, Dr. McCarron.
Okay, so on the business side, we are currently in the process of working and finalizing the 2021 budget. We are waiting for the governor's address, which should be the fourth Tuesday every month of February each year. Last year, that was pushed back to the first week in March. So once we hear that, our final from the state in terms of state aid will be finalized and submitted. We are currently in the works of finalizing all projects for 2021. In terms of the gymnasium floor, that's our largest project. We have had meetings with all contractors. Frank has been working closely with each of them just to make sure that... Every school district has literally 10 weeks to do every project, major project, over the course of a summer month. So we wanted to make sure that everyone was locked in and ready to go to start as soon as possible and that we weren't put on the back burner for this. I met today with people from before and after care because we're already planning out our summer camp program as far as what that's gonna look like, logistics, counselors, getting those things in order. So we're hoping that information will be out by the end of April and then by the end of the school year, information will be out for before and after care. Our numbers are increasing annually. One concern that we do have is the number of students who are registered for summer camp. If it goes up, I think by about 20 more students, and it has been going up each year, we would require a second director for the summer camp to operate, which is a good thing. So it's actually requiring us to have more people to participate. In terms of curriculum, we had our PD day on February 14th. We did a number of professional development sessions regarding language arts, programs that we have in district, really focusing on intentional practices and how we're providing instruction to students and best methods for that. So we're continuing that in our March 27th PD day. We are looking for next year at a new ELA curriculum, which would be focused in grades K to 5 that we're looking at. So we have three programs that we're looking at. One aligns more with everything that we've been doing. We aren't looking at taking everything away that's working. We're looking at building our program and providing additional resources to staff. And then finally, of course, it's the end of, towards the end of the school year. So right now, we are in NJSLA, preparation for state assessment in grades three through eight, which will be coming up at the end of the year. All dates for those assessments are posted on the district website under Curriculum and Instruction.
I have a question. So the gym is not gonna be able to be used?
Correct.
And kids are still, you said that the summer program's growing, but you still think that it's feasible to run it here?
So while the gym will be able to be used, last year, they did not have the library or labs available. That was shut down completely. We also weren't fully utilizing the old purpose room up front as a gymnasium, so we will be utilizing all of those areas across the building. One thing we are looking at with sports camps is possibly using either Bingham or Downing as locations for sports camps to start. In the past, we've also used Harry Williams and also Green Acres.
Harry Williams is air conditioned now and is available for you. So there is definite option.
I forgot that was an option.
Absolutely.
So we've started with summer camp and then we're stemming out to our Title I ESY and then we're looking at our sports camps also. Sports camps though also rely heavily on numbers and we wanna make sure that if we're gonna run a sports camp, that it's actually feasible and also worthwhile for the students who are participating.
I was just worried about like the kids who I know like the ESY stuff, but I was just worried about like the kids who come here for like camp to be able to have like opportunities to like have some physical activity.
And our numbers are extremely high in our earlier grades, students entering K and students entering 1. This year, we do have, because now that we have the preschool located here, we actually have rooms where we can take them to that are age appropriate and we can do more with them, especially because of the areas that we built, the courtyard's now done, where we have activities. We have the playground outside by the soccer field. We also have the sensory area, which is over on the side by the side parking lot. So there's multiple areas for them, for us to spread out in the front part of the building. And then our ESY Title I is usually back in the fourth and fifth grade wing, so we just would be blocking off the gymnasium altogether. And I know that sometimes students in ESY Title I might get a short period of gym for a half hour or whatnot, that'll be pushed outside. So there's certain things that we're gonna have to improvise on and kind of just make those accommodations as time goes on. But we're very helpful and positive.
Not only for the sports camps though, but maybe reach out and do a request for, you know, just for accessibility, if it's available. And I need to leave the going into K summer camp application, please.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Dr. McCarron?
I'm sorry.
No? So the other district reports, thanks, Dr. McCarron. District reports, principals reports, nurses, building grounds, special education reports we're attached, does anybody have any questions on them? No? Okay. Any committee reports at this time? Chad did leave something for all of us and like I said, he's up in Trenton. Naomi, you said you had something?
I attended the Board of Directors meeting two weeks ago and went over some issues in Senate, New Jersey State Senate did not have enough votes to, in order to pass the path to progress, so that is gonna be tabled. So that's something that school districts have to conserve about, reutilization and so that's something we don't need to worry about at this point. And they did encourage us, they are working on Convention 2020 and they're going to go Monday through Thursday this year. And Monday through Thursday, and they're asking and encouraging your buildings and grounds, people to come, they have certifications that they credit, certifications that they can get. So anyone, I think they bumped it up to 18 to 20 people this year that can attend. You could stagger your attendance on who's out of the district at certain points, but they wanted to encourage all staff to attend for training and also credits towards their certifications.
That does mean you can get out of it.
What's that? Where do I go? All four days? Yes. I don't care.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, yes.
And that's, that's good news for us, that has a progress, a little small district.
I know, I'll be down as a school member.
He has a school board.
Oh yeah, that's right. Now you really can't get out, I forgot. Any other questions or anything? No? Ready for new business?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I did attend the zoning board meeting this past week, so I'll take over for Chad with that, as I think we discussed in our last meeting.
Yes.
Big shoes to fill with Chad the overachiever.
As he's trying real hard.
After I introduced my, I know everybody on the board, but I introduce myself as being a board member that's gonna be there. And they were just really extending their gratitude to Chad as always being like friendly, professional, asking tough questions like, who's on it? And they really respected him for that and they thanked him for that. But basically, they talked about the redevelopment on the pipe, which has been going for a while, and they're kind of in a tight spot figuring out how to get the word out there. Because, so your committee can't go out or your board can't go out there and say, hey, sell your business, you know what I mean? Because now that's a conflict. So they discussed that, but other than that, it was basically just like rework. So I'm looking forward to getting involved in it.
Thank you. Given another one of your nights, we appreciate it.
I went to the Borough meeting and four Rondome police officers, like there was like 80 years of experience on her that night. Four officers received their 20-year plaques. So that was the big, there wasn't a whole lot aside from that. And what a very...
John Work, Bill Ortiz, Rob Alexander.
And Sergeant.
And Sergeant Frye. Yeah, so four of them.
Yeah, so it was very cool.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And every police officer on that force was in that room that night. It was a lot, very, yes.
It's incredible. We have a lot to be proud of.
It's a brotherhood.
Yeah, lots to be proud of, yep. Thank you too, Maria, for giving us one of your nights. Anything else?
I was just talking to women's club. The women's club had their spelling bee in January. Four students were, made it to the next level and went to the district spelling bee in, at the head of Fort Nightingale. Two of them actually made it there. Virginia, Catherine.
Yeah.
Melons is actually going on to the state bee on March 7th. So represented at the state level.
Thank you for the women's club for sponsoring that.
I couldn't spell some of the words, by the way, that day.
I was, I was at Fort Nightingale.
No, I'm glad it wasn't, because that was, you know, the preliminary ones, I was...
Are they like the write it? Are they, do they have to do it by memory?
In their hand.
They're allowed to write it on their hands?
Yes.
That would make a difference for me.
It's impressive.
That's awesome. Thank you again.
One more thing on the women's club, we actually had an international dinner next week and we're actually honoring a school district employee this year. It unfortunately does conflict a little bit with the Founder's Dinner, however, Mrs. Wilson is actually our honorary this year. So along with everything else, she already has...
I know that.
So if anybody's really bored and isn't going to the Founder's Dinner, like please feel free to come up to the...
Where is that? Where is that?
That will be held at the Senior Center at the Harry Williams Building. Yes. And that is next Tuesday, the 25th.
6:30.
Yeah. There'll be, whatever, 6:30. Yeah, you can come early, it helps out, feel free.
Or you can come early to the, to the...
Yeah. But anyway, Mrs. Wilson, again, my other, you know, district employee.
I'm sorry, there's actually three, because there's one for veterans. My dad is, yeah, he's a support squad, so I'm sorry, it won't be either one. Well deserved, Mrs. Wilson, as always. Thank you, Maria, for letting us know that. We can torture her at later.
Could I go back?
Yes.
Just to, I guess, special education before, I know that we have a special education report every, every month. I was wondering, for the students that are in advanced classes or in gifted and talented program, I was wondering if they have anything special to identify them as gifted and talented, like we have IEPs for our children that have specialties. Is there anything that they have that's extra that ensures that they have a special learning plan?
Well, that, that wouldn't be, that would be the director of curriculum question, no.
Okay.
Not director of special education.
So, yeah, so in order to qualify, we have multiple levels that we look at each student in terms of identifying them for gifted and talented program. On top of that, so it might be teacher recommendation, grades, NJSLA assessment. The students are required to actually write on their own why they wanna be a part of the program. We feel like that's an extremely valuable piece. And then also, we have a SAGE's assessment, which measures gifted and talented ability through a certain number of battery tests.
And they have to score a certain, they have to score a certain on that?
Correct. And then when you, when you speak with anyone in the gifted and talented realm, it's always the top 5% within the class. So gifted and talented program can, you know, you can invite anyone in and it can be beneficial. However, if you have a true program, it's only selecting the 5% of students who are in that top class. And then, of course, when they're pulled for those things, there's an expectation, once they're in the program, that they need to complete certain tasks, they need to show up to meetings, they need to maintain their grades when they're not in class and make up anything that they've missed. And then a lot of it is project-based and Mr. Brenore tries to get the sense from the kids as far as what direction they wanna go in and then they kind of build their own projects. Some of those projects, Mr. Ayenucci, I think might have already reported on it, go to our New Jersey school boards for the STEAM competition. Last year, we had two teams, this year, we have four. So we're increasing our numbers on that, going to our regional help. So yes, there are multiple ways that we have.
Just one thing, I went up with Chad to the social, social learning conference next Friday and Ian Harkley was the keynote speaker. He, he's one of the parents that had his son killed in Sandy Hook. And he took you right through the day, the timeline, when he was there, the time that he went to work that day till the end of the day, we found out his son was one of the survivors, the one president came, he put a hurt pin drop in there, it was just like he was there that day, he was taken back. But one point of, they had a discussion of is how lockdown active shooter drills mostly affect kids today. And when I was a kid, you know, Russia was gonna bomb the place, you put a coat under your thing, go under the desk, there was no benchmark because there was no bombs. But when you have these drills, they know that there's been a ton from ahead of you that could be next. So that's one thing that they were really, were really...
Yeah, there's, I think there was something about that in the school leader magazine that we get as well. I read something about that too. So look out for that if you didn't look through that yet.
He spoke about one drill in one school, some part of the country, whatever, when they, when their active shooter drill, they shoot teachers with rubber balls. You know, it was just bizarre.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for taking the time, I knew they would do that. Thank you. I'm glad it was interesting. We ready for new business? All right. New business, property and transportation, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through five.
I'll make that motion through the day.
Motion made by Dennis, seconded by Naomi. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Samz.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through five.
I make a motion to approve items one through five under Personnel.
Second.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Samz.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through five.
I make a motion to approve items one through five under Personnel.
Second.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Benzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Samz.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Okay, that's right. Now you really can't get out, I forgot. Any other questions or anything? No? New business, ready for new business?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I did attend the zoning board meeting this past week, so I'll take over for Chad with that, as I think we discussed on our last meeting.
Yes.
Big shoes to fill with Chad the overachiever. You know, they went on, after I introduced my, I know everybody on the board, but I just must hope as being a board member is going to be there. And they were just really extending their gratitude to Chad as always being like friendly, professional, asking tough questions like who's on it, and they really respected him for that, and they thanked him for that. But basically, they talked about the redevelopment on the pipe, which has been going for a while, and they're kind of in a tight spot figuring out how to get the word out there. Because, so your, your committee can't go out or your board can't go out there and say, hey, sell your business. You know what I mean? Because now that's a conflict. So they discussed that, but other than that, it was basically just like rework. So I'm looking forward to getting involved in it.
Thank you. Given another one of your nights, we appreciate it.
I went to the borough meeting and four Rona Mead police officers, there was like 80 years of experience on her that night. Four officers received their 20-year plaques. So that was the big, there wasn't a whole lot aside from that. And what a very...
John, John Work, Bill Ortiz, Rob Alexander.
And Sergeant.
And Sergeant Fry Olson, yeah, so four of them.
Yeah, so it was very cool.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And every police officer on that force was in that room that night. It was a lot, very, yes.
We have a lot to be proud of.
It's a brotherhood. It's camp really nice.
Yep. Thank you too, Maria, for giving us one of your nights. Anything else?
The Women's Club had their spelling bee in January. Four, four students were, made it to the next level and went to the district spelling bee in, at the Head and Fort Nighting. Two of them actually made it there. Virginia Catherine.
Yeah.
Milnes is actually going on to the state bee on March 7th. So represented at state level.
Thank you for the Women's Club for sponsoring that.
I couldn't smell some of the words, by the way, that time.
I should have mentioned on the Head and Fort Nightings.
No, I'm glad I wasn't. I was, you know, the preliminary ones, I was...
Are they, they write it? Are they, do they have to do it by memory? They're allowed to write it on their hands?
Yes.
That would make a difference for me. That's awesome. Thank you again.
One more thing on the Women's Club. We actually had an international dinner next week, and we're actually honoring a school district employee this year. It unfortunately does conflict a little bit with the Founder's Dinner. However, Mrs. Wilson is actually our honorary this year. So along with everything else she already has. If anybody's really bored, isn't going to the Founder's Dinner, like, please feel free to come up to the...
That's good. I'm going to say dinner, please.
That will be held at the Senior Center at the Harry Williams Building. Yes, and that is next Tuesday, the 25th. Yeah, there'll be, whatever, 6:30. Yeah, you can come early. It helps out, feel free.
Or you can come early to the, to the, um...
Yeah, but anyway, Mrs. Wilson, again, my other, you know, district employee.
I'm sorry, there's actually three, because there's one for veterans. My dad is...
Yeah, that one is all around town.
So I'm sorry, it won't be either one today. Well deserved, Mrs. Wilson, as always. Thank you, Maria, for letting us know that. Here, we can torture her later.
Could I go back to, just to, I guess, special education before? I know that we have a special education report every, every month. I was wondering, for the students that are in advanced classes or in gifted and talented program, I was wondering if they have anything special to identify them as gifted and talented? Like, like we have IEPs for our children that have specialties. Is there anything that they have that's extra that ensures that they have a special learning plan?
Well, that, that wouldn't be, that would be the director of curriculum question, no.
Okay.
Not director of special education.
So, yeah, so in order to qualify, we have multiple levels that we look at each student in terms of identifying them for a gifted and talented program. On top of that, so it might be teacher recommendation, grades, NJSLA assessment. The students are required to actually write on their own why they want to be a part of the program. We feel like that's an extremely valuable piece. And then also, we have a SAGE's assessment, which measures gifted and talented ability through a certain number of battery tests.
And they have to score a certain, they have to score a certain on that, okay?
And then when you, when you speak with anyone in the gifted and talented realm, it's always the top 5% within the class. So gifted and talented program can, you know, you can invite anyone in and it could be beneficial. However, if you have a true program, it's only selecting the 5% of students who are in that top class. And then, of course, when they're pulled for those things, there's an expectation, once they're in the program, that they need to complete certain tasks, they need to show up to meetings, they need to maintain their grades when they're not in class and make up anything that they've missed. And then a lot of it is project-based, and Mr. Pernor tries to get the sense from the kids as far as what direction they want to go in. And then they kind of build their own projects. Some of those projects, Mr. Ainutie, I think you might have already reported on it, go to our New Jersey school boards for the STEAM competition. Last year, we had two teams. This year, we have four. So we're increasing our numbers on that, going to our regional help. So yes, there are multiple ways that we are.
Just one thing, I went up with Chad to the social, the social learning conference last Friday. Ian Hockley was the keynote speaker. He's one of the parents that had his son killed in Sandy Hook. And he took you right through the day timeline, when he was there, the time that he went to work that day, till the end of the day, we found that his son was the one that survived, was the one who was president. He could have hurt a pin drop in there. It was just like he was there that day, he was taken back. But one point of, they had a discussion of is how lockdown active shooter drills mostly affect kids today. And when I was a kid, you know, Russia was going to bomb the place, you put a coat under your thing, go under the desk. There was no bench work because there was no bombs. And when you have these drills, they know that there's been a ton of them ahead of you that could be next. So that's one thing that they were really, were really...
Yeah, there's, I think there was something about that in the school leader magazine that we get as well. I read something about that too. So look out for that if you didn't look through that yet.
We spoke about one drill in one school, some part of the country, whatever, when they, when their active shooter drill, or shoot teachers was possible. You know, it was just bizarre.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for taking the time. They will do that. Thank you. I'm glad it was interesting. We ready for new business? All right. New business, property and transportation. I need a motion to approve items numbers one through five.
I'll make that motion through there.
Motion made by Dennis, seconded by Naomi. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Personnel, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through five.
I make a motion to approve items one through five under Personnel.
Second.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Naomi. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Julia McCalves here. I just approved her for one of our preschool teachers next year. Julia started off the year with us already this year in preschool for a long-term sub. She came back over to, went back over to Downing School to be another long-term in second grade. Came back over to Volks, back to preschool as an instructional associate, and is now back over at Downing.
Yes, sorry, actually.
She really demonstrated this time she's here. Just a great addition to the staff. So we knew we had an opportunity for another preschool classroom next year. We don't want to wait until the spring so somebody else can find out how wonderful she is. I had an opportunity to watch her teach about 35 preschool kids dance last week in the gym, and you could have hurt a pin drop. So she did a really great job. We look forward to having her here.
Thank you. Thank you and welcome. Thank you for coming tonight, too. Welcome. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
See that big smile? I just, I'm the only one in the line that can totally back this up. Do you see her smile? So it's pouring rain, right? You have no idea how many more, you all have, I'll have an idea how many pouring mornings there have been, right? So she comes out with that smile, no matter what the weather is. It's like 30 loads. She doesn't wear socks half the time. She's dressed in line. She's got this big smile, but you know what? So does every single child to the door she opens. It's just, there, I can take so many videos and pictures of her enthusiasm and the kids and the parents that love you. So thank you. Truly the huge asset.
Yes, thank you. Under Finance, I need a motion to approve items numbers one through eight, please. Motion made by Dan.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Maria. Any questions there? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Curriculum, I need a motion for items numbers one through four.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Dan.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Maria. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray. Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams. Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Other policies, sorry, in public relations, I need a motion to approve items numbers one and two. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry. I'm only kidding. We spoke about it.
They're on a Friday.
I make that motion.
Motion made?
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Patty.
Question?
Actually, you did put this in your, um, your report, yes. I just went on wrong. I need to correct my summary.
Well, there's always that border of detection. We didn't know you missed it way ahead of time, too.
That was December.
I know. I just want to be on board of production, you know, proper planning. I'm like, any ideas? Did you? See?
I don't have any issues with this, do you? Anyone else have any questions? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Derrick.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Lego.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Ms. Panzarella.
Yes.
Ms. Sams.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, we are open for public comment on non-agenda items. If anyone has any public comment, now is the time. I'll take Mrs. Kelly first, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to let everybody know that Reimagine Rona Mead has had a poem, a love poem to Rona Mead. And the winners have been announced, and they have been invited to come to the award ceremony on March 4th at the Borough Hall. And there are awards will be given that night, and all nine poems, that's sixth, seventh, and eighth, ninth, will be read that night, either by students or by an adult that has great history for them. So that's March 4th at the Borough Hall at 7:00. And it will be the awards for the Love Poem to Rona Mead. We had 300 poems to look at. I was not part of the judging. The Southern, the poet society of Southern New Jersey did the judging. They are professional poets, and one of them was nominated for poet, for the Nobel Peace Prize for one of his poems. So they're very credentialed poets. And it was a pleasure to work with them on this project. And they will be running that award ceremony that evening, so...
In the courtroom, Mrs. Kelly?
It's at the courtroom, the council chambers at the Borough Hall. And that's on March 4th at 7:00.
I got it.
So...
Thank you for letting us know and inviting us. Thank you. I'm sorry, it's just your full name.
Timothy Ryan, 811 Crescent Avenue. In December of 2019, there was a lockdown drill at Teddington. And my daughter was outside of the classroom in the bathroom, and, you know, she didn't know what to do. So we came over and we spoke with her. We had a meeting on December 17th. We brought up this concern as far as just letting the kids, we believe that they should be talked to as to what they should do if they run into that situation. We were told that the kids, we can only speak for Bingham, that they're too young to be spoken to, like as far as... We, we know that in the middle school, they're taught to stand on the toilet, hide in the bathroom. My daughter got called in the hallway. We had a discussion at home, but my wife and I also think that they should be taught at school, kind of what to do if this situation happens. She was not the first person that we were told that this has happened to. To our understanding, two months later, this still hasn't been addressed. And during that lockdown in December, she was able to go from the bottom bathroom floor all the way to each level. The safety doors were not closed. We were told they are not closed for lockdown drills, only for fire drills. I've spoken to several contacts and I believe it's being looked into. I'm just, you know, it's been two, two months since then. I really haven't heard anything about it. My opinion, and my wife says, if you close that door, if an intruder were to get in, they're trapped on that bottom floor. We believe it would make the police job a lot harder, at least, you know, I know it's obviously a terrible situation, but the person would be stuck on that first floor at least until maybe help arrives.
I'm just, I'm writing some stuff down. So bottom, could you tell me just what grade your daughter's in?
Sure, Julianne is in third.
Third grade?
Yep.
And she was in the bottom, all the way down to the bottom?
All the way down to the bottom.
Like where the, where the gym is?
The special rooms, right?
She was near the art room.
Yeah.
And then she got all the way up to her floor, which is like third floor?
The top floor.
Top floor, yes.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, but we, and obviously, you've heard from our conversations that this is one of our topics of discussion, and we'll bring it, we'll...
I appreciate it.
We'll make sure that it is brought to the attention of the administration and that we'll have some type of training for the kids. Because they all need to be trained in what all wants to do. I think that we all agree with you there.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Any other public comment this time? No? Okay. So there's no need for executive session. However, we do have some meeting changes. If we could grab our calendars real quick. We were like, Dr. McCarron, Mr. Ainutie said, we are kind of, we have to go by what the state tells us to do as far as budgets and budget hearings. So we are going to change our, we originally had March for the 24th, because we thought it would be the budget hearing. And it is, was, does not have to be that way. It can't be that way. So we're going to go back to our regularly scheduled meeting, when that will be March 17th at the regular time. I know. Dr. McCarron's bringing the Irish potatoes. And our April meeting will have to be moved to the 28th because we must do our budget hearing between the 24th, which is a Friday, and April 7th, which is a Thursday. So we'll just keep our Tuesday nights and deal with the 28th of April.
Vote here?
Vote here, yes, because that'll be our public budget hearing.
In March 7th?
March 17th and April 28th. And Dr. McCarron will put that out to email for those of us who aren't here.
It will also be readvertised.
And we will have to readvertise. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Maria. Seconded by Dennis. All in favor? Eyes have it. We adjourn at 7:42.